...of the city council and city staff as authorized under Minnesota statutes. Section 13D point 021, due to the declared local public health emergency. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll so that we can verify a quorum.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Kano. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Here.
Council President Bender.
Here.
There are 11 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Colleagues, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano. Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting on June 12th. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano. Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and the minutes are accepted. And next, we have referral petitions, communications, reports to the proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano. Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and those matters are referred. But that will proceed to the mayor's regular report of the state of our local health emergency under the order of new business. We have the full report posted in LIMs. And in the interest of time, because several of us have a meeting with the governor's office at 11:30, I've asked Mayor Frye if he can consolidate the presentation today. I will hold our questions until the end. Of course, we want to highlight any new information and leave plenty of time for substantive questions. So I will invite the mayor to begin, and I will track and hold your questions as we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be as brief as possible. It has been a trying week for our city with gun violence and other issues throughout Minneapolis. And like many of you, I've been working very close contact with our community leaders and businesses who have been directly impacted. For actions in the city of Minneapolis, there have been 14 emergency regulations to date. I won't get into any of them, but they are posted on the report that you've received. For health by the numbers, the total approximate number of completed tests is 542,696. The total number of cases and positive cases in Minnesota is 34,123. I'm going to skip all of the information regarding Hennepin County specific, moving right to the total hospitalization, which is 3,943 presently, I'm sorry, 336 as of today, and then 162 hospitalized in an ICU. Minneapolis' case information includes total positive cases of 4,455. I will skip the other figures as you probably have them in your report. The Minneapolis demographic data is also there in your report, and for time purposes, I'm going to skip that as well. But it is publicly noticed, and if you want any of the information, you can get it right there. The Health Department, moving to that slide. Congregate living facilities in Minneapolis continue to see new cases among residents. And while accounting for only 10% of confirmed cases, there are almost 80% of COVID-19 deaths. Certainly a disproportionate impact there. Majority of white cases, 54%, are 45 and older. Over 60% cases among Black, Asian, Hispanics are under 45 years of age. Moving on to testing. The Minnesota Department of Health recommends COVID-19 testing if you were involved in any of the recent protests that occurred across the state beginning May 25, 2020. Free testing was offered through June 24 in Minneapolis and St. Paul. Contact tracing. The Health Department continues to conduct over 30 case investigations and contact follow-up for individuals diagnosed with COVID-19 every day. 86% of all cases reported in Minneapolis have been interviewed. 10% are lost to follow-up, 2% refuse the interview, and 2% represent new cases that we have yet to speak with. Currently, the MHD has 21 investigators and has onboarded 10 non-MHD enterprise staff. So they're doing very hard work that is absolutely essential right now. In addition, through June 24, Minnesota Health Department is, Minneapolis Health Department, excuse me, staff have supported the Minnesota Health Department's community testing at a number of sites, including Sabatheni, Holy Trinity, and New Salem Baptist Churches. 2,561 people were tested at these sites last week with a positivity rate of .07%. In the area of prevention, we recently provided 4,516 cloth masks and 486 bottles of sanitizers to residents, low-income multifamily housing properties, faith communities, community clinics, and Cedar Riverside Community Org, and the Community Healthcare Clinic. Moving to the Office of Emergency Management and Workforce, I'm going to actually skip this. The numbers are basically exactly the same as last week and the week before. We very much appreciate their work during this time. I know they're doing overtime. Procurement. As of June 24, there has been 5,000, excuse me, 5,034,939 spent. The total increase was roughly 64,000 and can be attributed to cloth masks, to the figure of 23,000 sanitizing supplies, and a contract for mental health services. And as I note every week, I want to be very clear, this is not the total spend related to COVID. The total spend is in the tens of millions at this point and is far more significant than these simple procurement items. The area of public safety, violent crime is up 13.25% year-to-date. Property crimes are up about 6.5 year-to-date. The past two weeks, there have been quite a few ShotSpotter activations, 196. And during the week of June 1st, there were 125 ShotSpotter activations. Those figures are quite high. Moving on to fire. The Fire Department continues to remain vigilant in their efforts to remain focused on the COVID-19 pandemic and the potential impact on our workforce. The department's daily staffing remains consistent, resulting in overtime being held to a minimum. The Longfellow neighborhood has taken the initiative of having a group of residents take the online CERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team course, together. Excellent idea. On Mondays, the department continues to participate in coordination with the mayor's office, the Office of OEM, and the Health Department with the Minneapolis Mask Up Cloth Drive. Moving on to state and federal activity. The Park Board reports that the encampment at Powderhorn has more than 300 tents. There are roughly another 125 tents across the city in various locations. That number could actually be higher in terms of the other various locations. A small group of staff from city, NPRB, county, and state is having regular meetings to discuss a response specific to Powderhorn, and will be engaging with volunteers as well as street outreach. And as Council President mentioned, there are myself and a couple others will be, council members will be attending the call with the governor shortly here. First special session summary, the 2020 first special session adjourned early last Saturday morning at an impasse. The Senate, House, and Governor did not agree on essential pieces of legislation that provided funding to local governments for COVID-19 response through the State's CARES Act appropriation, public safety reform, bonding, and economic relief funding to support recovery work related to the civil unrest post George Floyd's murder. On Thursday, the governor announced a plan to distribute CARES Act relief funds to communities across the state, and we expect Minneapolis to receive roughly 32 million of that. We, of course, would like to receive the additional monies that are based on need. Minneapolis, given the density of population, has a disproportionate impact on our residents, COVID-19, that is. And we know that there are other cities and towns around the state of Minnesota that also have a disproportionate impact, and we certainly believe that money should be delivered based on where it is needed most. The governor's extension of the peacetime state of emergency for another 30 days was not rescinded during the last week by the legislature, and this means that there will more than likely be a second special session to continue to address the peacetime emergency declaration. Federal update. Congress has not set a date for a vote on the fourth stimulus package. Move on to gap funding. An additional 400 applications beyond the original group of 1,500 applicants have all been assigned to community prevention partners, MPHA, the city and county staff to complete the full verification and approval process. And as of Wednesday, June 24, 288 applications have been approved totaling 415,427 in assistance payments. For the forgivable loan program, the small business forgivable loans have been fully awarded a value of $1,550,000. That was awarded to 173 small businesses. Thank you so much to all that were involved in getting that money out and for that work. I know how important it is. Minneapolis Forward is a cross-section team that will help transform Minneapolis to a stronger, equitable, inclusive, resilient, and innovative city. The work continues. The coalition has already begun meeting, and we have established a core strategies team that is made up of the coalition co-chairs and agencies and organizations that are rooted in the community. Thank you so much, all, for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Apologize for the rushed presentation, but I know you have work to do.
Thank you, Mayor Frye. Any questions or comments from councilmembers? I don't see any, Mayor. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Madam President, I do have a question, and I just put my name in the queue.
Council Vice President.
Thank you. Mayor Frye, yeah, that was a very rapid report, but I'm really curious about the contract for mental health services. I'm not sure what that means. There were $64,000 spent on hand sanitizers, masks, and mental health services. Can you just give a little insight into what that means?
Madam President, Council Vice President. The mental health services, I believe, were actually contracted some time ago, and the money is more recently going out the door. I will first turn it over to Commissioner Music Hand if she can further elaborate, though.
Good morning. This is Deputy Commissioner Noia Woodrich. Gretchen is on vacation today. Vice President Jenkins, I will get further detail on that and get an answer to all of you about where that money went specifically.
Okay, thank you. And just to be clear, I'm really trying to understand what the services are as well. So, yes, thank you very much.
Ms. Woodrich is, we would be correct to ask the Health Department, right, as opposed to some other entity?
Yes, Mayor and Council Vice President, that is correct. We have given the money out. It is for community-based work that is taking place. I just, I don't have more detail than that, but I'm happy to get it for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from councilmembers? I don't see any. So with that, thank you, Mayor Frye, and of course, we can always follow up as well. Thanks. So if there are no objections, I will direct the clerk to file the mayor's report. Again, the full report is available on the LIM system as well. The next order of business is the reports of standing committees. We'll begin with a report from the Business Inspections and Zoning Committee. This chair, this cycle, the meeting was chaired by the Vice Chair, Councilmember Schrader. I will move approval of the report as listed in LIMs. I will note that there were specific applications for the addresses 2309 Plymouth Avenue North and 510 West Lake Street, along with liquor and gambling licenses, an animal control item, and one item related to the post office mobile station. So I will move approval of that report. I will see if the chair would like to add any detail, and then see if there's any questions or discussion from councilmembers. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to highlight for my colleagues that, number one, we will also be adopting findings of fact submitted by the city attorney's office.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there any other comments on the Biz Committee report? Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just hopeful that we can get a little more information on the mobile postal unit. That's a big concern for my constituents, as well as, I'm sure, others in the city, if we can just hear a little bit more about what that means.
Council President, Council Vice President, if I may, this is David Frank from CPED. This is allowing us to enter into an agreement with the U.S. Postal Service to have their mobile truck on-site after we have control of the property, which we expect in the next few days. The truck will be on-site during the day, some days during the week, and then it will be driven off-site in the evening. So this allows us to enter into an agreement with slightly different terms from what we usually sign, because the post office has a standard agreement as we do, and it's slightly easier for us to ask you for permission to change hours. So this is for the mobile truck in the Kmart parking lot.
Thank you very much. And this mobile truck is sorting, accepting, and delivering mail.
Council President, Council Vice President, sorry, I should have started with that. But these are retail services available to residents and businesses. So this is the equivalent of the window at the post office. The postal service would not be sorting mail here. You'd be able to buy stamps, send packages, things like that.
Right. So that's really important for residents to know. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other discussion on the Biz Committee agenda? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Policy and Government Oversight Committee. I will move approval of the POGO agenda as listed in the LIM system. Those items were presented and discussed at the POGO meeting last week. I will note that Director Hutchinson sent an email to the city council about item number 29, which was the item about scooter licenses in the city. So I will move that, and I will see if there's any discussion. Again, my intention is not to stop any discussion or substantive comments, but rather just to save time by not reading all of the items out loud. They are noted in the LIMs agenda and were read and discussed out loud at the committee meeting last week. Is there any discussion on any of these items? I don't see any. I will just note, then, for the record, that on item 29, the scooter licenses that would increase the number, there would be a grace period for all companies to comply with all of the regulations, including the locking mechanism that was discussed at committee.
And Madam President, before you leave that item, that item came out of committee with no recommendation. I'm assuming with the answer from Director Hutchinson included in the record, the motion includes approval of that item with that clarification, just so I have that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Yes. My intention is to move all items for approval.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. We, the next order of business is report of the special committee, and we do have a report from the executive committee. I'll recognize Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The executive committee brings forward one item for consideration today, which is to refer the reappointment of Fire Chief John Frito as Fire Chief to the Policy and Governance Oversight Committee for scheduling of a public hearing. And I move the executive committee report for approval.
Council Vice President has moved the executive committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted and will be referred to the committee as described. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions, and we have five notices this morning, all reflected on the agenda. These are all notices of intent to introduce the subject matter of various ordinances at the next regular meeting of the city council, which is scheduled for Friday, July 17. First, from Councilmember Fletcher, an ordinance amending the code to add a new section entitled "Funding Acquisition and Deployment of Military and Surveillance Equipment." Second, from Councilmember Palmasano, an ordinance related to police conduct oversight, amending provisions related to the chief's disciplinary decisions pursuant to the stipulation and order entered into by the city, the police department, and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. The third and fourth notices are related, both from Councilmember Gordon, which are ordinances to amend the housing code and the zoning code to regulate rooming houses, single occupancy units, and congregant living facilities, all involving several chapters as noted on the agenda. And the fifth notice is from Councilmembers Gordon and Fletcher for an ordinance to amend the zoning code to amend regulations related to off-street parking and loading, as well as travel demand management. I see Councilmember Schrader in queue related to items three and four.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to be added as a co-author on three and four.
Thank you, Councilmember. Chair of our Zoning and Planning Committee, appreciate that very much. Any discussion on any of those notices? Seeing none, all five ordinances, the notice has been given and no further action is required. Those will come back to the next city council meeting for subject matter introduction. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. We have four ordinances to consider this morning. First, Councilmember Goodman requests unanimous consent and moves to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Policy and Government Oversight Committee an ordinance related to the Summit House Housing Improvement Area, which was previously approved at the council's meeting on May 8. This action is to address technical and clerical errors with that prior action and to extend the effective date of the original ordinance. Is there any discussion on that introduction and referral? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the ordinance will be referred to the POGO Committee in the next cycle on Thursday, July 9. The next introduction this morning pursuant to prior notice given is by Councilmember Kano. It's a motion to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Business and Inspections and Zoning Committee an ordinance amending licenses and business regulations by adding a new chapter, 353, entitled "Commercial Property Sale," to require the advanced notice of sale of commercial property. Is there any discussion on the introduction and referral of that ordinance? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the ordinance will be referred to the Biz Committee in the next cycle on Tuesday, July 14. The third introduction this morning pursuant to prior notice given is from Councilmember Gordon, and is a motion to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Policy and Government Oversight Committee an ordinance amending, altering, and adding provisions related to the police department and its duty, structure, and oversight. Is there any discussion on that introduction and referral? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that ordinance will be referred to the POGO Committee in the next cycle on Thursday, July 9. The fourth introduction pursuant to prior notice given at the last regular council meeting is by councilmembers Ellison, Kano, Gordon, Fletcher, and myself. Kano, Gordon, Fletcher and myself. It is a proposal for a charter amendment by referendum related to the creation of a new Community Safety and Violence Prevention Department and the removal of the Police Department as a charter department. There are a series of procedural motions associated with this action and thank you so much to the Clerk and his staff for sending out information about this for the public and for council members. So the first of these motions, I will take up first the motion to amend the notice that was given in order to extend the scope to include further amendments in Article 8 that relate to the Police Department. That motion is before you and this would check through the whole charter and is more of a technical change because the notice given at the last council meeting did not include these references. So I do see we have one question from Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we get to the point of suspending the rules here, I would just like for the Clerk, he did send a great email to all of us, but I'd like to ask the Clerk if he would summarize what will need to happen for an order of this magnitude on the whole charter process. Maybe that's not, well, yeah, I think that is maybe for now, but as we get to that point, could we please ask the Clerk to explain all the different pieces and parts that happened here?
Sure. So I will start and answer that question by saying there will be three motions related to this topic of the charter amendment. The first is a motion to amend the notice that was given that would require unanimous approval in order to include these extra references to the Police Department in the charter. They're of a technical nature. If that amendment fails, regardless of the outcome of that vote, the next motion would be to suspend the rules, to expedite the process of an ordinance to put this on the ballot because of the timeline related to get to the 2020 election. And then the third motion would be specific to the language and the underlying ordinance for this charter change. That would be the specific ballot language and the underlying ordinance that would be going along with the question to voters on the ballot. So the question about rule suspension is really specific to the second motion, but I'm happy to recognize the Clerk to speak a little bit to the process more than I have done and then we can proceed back to that first motion.
Madam President, you've stated the process more concisely than I ever could. I'm happy to provide more explanation if necessary on the suspension of the rules, but as you've surmised, the actual motion right now is on the content of the question before and it requires unanimous consent for us to determine whether or not to include the other technical provisions within the scope of the notice. So I think maybe if the body starts there and then there are more questions, I can certainly add to the very good explanation you've already provided.
Thank you. So again, this motion is specific to amending the notice as given to include these extra items. The next motion will be specific to the next steps of the charter language. So are there any specific questions or discussion items on this motion to amend the notice as given? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that amends the prior notice as given.
Madam President, before you continue, I would say that the technical team then will be working to both post a copy of the updated draft ordinance that includes the technical changes both in Article 7 and in Article 8 to LIMs so that the public can access that. And I would also share that the technical team has ready and is available to post, if you would like, for viewing that new draft of the ordinance which incorporates both changes in Articles 7 and 8 so that that could be part of the broadcast. And again, it will be posted very shortly for public access via LIMs.
Thank you both to the Clerk's Office and the technical team for that, for doing that. The second motion is to suspend the rules to expedite the processing of this ordinance due to the statutorily dictated timeline for the submission of ballot questions for this year's general election. The statutory deadline to submit a ballot question is August 21. In order to meet that deadline, the motion before the council is to suspend the rules to allow for the joint referral of this proposal to the Charter Commission for its review, which is mandated by state law, and to our POGO Committee. And to provide only one public hearing on this proposal, which would be conducted by the Charter Commission. This would also authorize the Charter Commission to submit its report and any recommendations directly to the POGO Committee rather than to the full City Council. This motion to suspend the rules essentially streamlines our legislative process to the maximum extent due to tight timelines and that has been sent out by the Clerk. And thank you again, Mr. Clerk, for making yourself so available this week to answer questions. To Councilmember Palmasano's point, this is a significant decision for us. Typically, this kind of decision would go sort of back and forth between the council and the Charter Commission and this would simply be making that decision today to send it directly to the Charter Commission as well as to our committee at the same time, having the one public hearing at the Charter Commission. So I will pause and see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues, happy to allow or invite the Clerk to make any clarifications or additions. I will note that passage of the motion to suspend our rules requires an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members present. And so we have the motion before you. I have moved that. I heard Councilmember Gordon chime in with a second in the middle of the long technical explanation. Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that has been adopted. I'll note that the Clerk's Office has shared that the legislative file has been updated in our LIMs system for the public, including those technical amendments that were made through that first motion. Thank you again for that. This brings us to the question of the underlying ordinance and its introduction and referral. I will move that and see if there's any discussion on the introduction and referral of this ordinance. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a few comments about the role of the City Council within the context of moving a charter amendment. I've had the good fortune, I guess I would say, to be involved in many charter amendments. And the point we're at right now is not the point where we're saying we want this to go on the ballot or we want the public to do this. In my opinion, what we're saying now is this is an item that belongs in the charter. It is a topic that is one at which the charter should take up, the issue of police staffing, and one in which we believe the voters should vote on. So by seeing unanimous consent, which I believe we'll see today, it's not necessarily a referendum by everybody on whether or not we're going to immediately change the charter. That's not what this does. This is not a unanimous vote to change it. It's a unanimous, and I don't know that it will be unanimous, but it is a vote to determine that this is an item worthy of the charter and what we're doing today is moving it forward to the Charter Commission for a public vote. I think it's important for folks to realize that. There are many issues that people would like to bring up on the charter that don't have anything to do with the charter. The example I use all the time is cannabis legalization. I don't know that there are many people, maybe Andrew Johnson and I, who want to see cannabis legalized, but we're not going to do a charter amendment on that because it's not something that has to do with the charter. But the makeup of public safety in the city of Minneapolis and MPD in particular is clearly an item for the charter and changes that need to happen need to happen through a charter amendment and I fully support that. I do believe that the public should have the opportunity to vote on how they view public safety in the city. So I just want to clarify, today's vote is not to do anything other than set up a public hearing for the Charter Commission to take on, to look at the language, they could make changes or not. It will come back to us. It's not a referendum by everybody on the council on whether or not this language is good or bad, but it will be a vote on whether or not we think the public deserves to take this issue up. And I certainly believe the public deserves to take this issue up, which is why I will be voting for this today. And attempting to be consistent, in my view, with regard to how we handle charter issues, everyone shouldn't come to us with every policy issue that they want changed unless it has something to do with the charter, the makeup of the MPD does. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to just state upfront that I am supportive of this action specifically for many of the reasons that Councilmember Goodman enumerated. I am absolutely supportive of our residents having the opportunity to weigh in on this, this significant change to our charter. What I do want to just say though is, you know, the issues of the Police Department, the issues of all of the institutions in our society is really foundationally underlying racism. And until we really address that issue, we can change the name of the public safety, you know, the makeup, but until we really address racism, nothing is going to change. We're going to have a new name of a new public safety measure with the same underlying racist foundations that has been involved in the formulation of this country forever. And so we must be dealing with both of those issues simultaneously. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to speak as someone who does support this charter amendment and I do want to say I think that this is something that we should do as a city and I'm going to be supporting, asking people not only to put this on the ballot but to vote yes. That I think this is very important for so many reasons and I just want to be clear about what it is and what it isn't because I wouldn't want anybody to think that this is the action that we're taking. I wouldn't want anybody to think that this is the change that people are asking for. This is a precondition to the change that people are asking for. It's a way of reducing the barriers that have prevented previous councils and previous mayors and previous community efforts from succeeding in creating the change that we need. And we have committed to a long community engagement process that is only just beginning. This vote, if it's on the ballot in November, as I hope it is, gives us an opportunity for the voters to check in in the middle of that engagement process to tell us that we're on the right track. I believe that that's the right thing for us to do, to make sure that we put it to the people of Minneapolis to make this change. And if, and we are going to be making decisions, there are a lot of big ideas being discussed, many of which are somewhat contradictory and we're going to have to make decisions. But I just want to be clear that if we wanted to pursue a Camden-style restart, as many have said, we need a charter change. If we want to abolish the police, as some are calling for, we need a charter change. If we want to create a more balanced department that relies less on police but maintains a police force, we need a charter change. And if we want the council to create increased public accountability and policy oversight and public safety, we need a charter change. If we want to maintain the status quo, we can do that under either version of the charter. And as Council Vice President Jenkins noted, it is possible, if we don't do the rest of our work, for us to do that and shame on us if we do. If we don't address the racism in our systems, if we don't address the changes that need to be made, we could end up in that situation. And the activists who are pointing out that this is not in itself the change we need are correct. We are not pre-deciding the outcomes of this community engagement process, but we are removing the main structural barriers to that change. What we are doing is putting the question to the voters. The people of Minneapolis should have a chance to decide. Voters can vote no if they want to maintain the structural barriers that have prevented changes for decades. Voters can vote yes if they want to create a more flexible and responsive government that can innovate, improve and provide a new approach to public safety. I for one am very excited to hear what the voters have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
It's a little dark in my apartment. I can't say it any better than my colleagues have already stated. You know, I think that, I want to thank Councilmember Goodman for highlighting for folks what this does and does not do. I want to thank Councilmember Jenkins for reminding us that no singular action is going to undo longstanding systemic oppression, racial oppression, and that this is one action of many that we need to take on this road to a more equitable and just system that keeps people safe. And I want to thank Councilmember Fletcher for really summarizing pretty much my exact feelings about what we're doing, about what this has the potential to do and not do. And I want to highlight for folks that when we talk about the barriers to changing our public safety system, we have the state legislature as a barrier to the kind of change that a lot of folks are asking for. We have the Federation as a barrier to the kind of change that people are asking for and we have the charter as a barrier to the kind of change that people are asking for. And we as a council have the ability to affect one of those barriers. It's a major one. The charter is that. And what we're seeing is that at the state legislature and with the Federation, I believe that we're going to have gridlock there. I don't believe that those are the pathways for people to activate their own agency and decide what public safety in Minneapolis is going to look like. The charter, this is the path that provides our residents with the most agency to affirm what they want a new public, a new system of public safety to look like. And so I do hope this makes it onto the ballot in November. I will be asking folks to vote yes. I think that the language is good and I think that it does successfully lay the groundwork for us to make the kind of systemic change that people are asking for. So I want to thank all my colleagues who are looking, who are going to support this and, you know, we will move on to the Charter Commission next. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to acknowledge all of the work that has gone into this language today. I know that for many of us responding to the horrific incident that took Mr. Floyd's life a few weeks ago, you know, a lot of us were trying to figure out what would be the most meaningful and true response to address the root causes of not only that specific incident but the many that all of us as a council have had to take up and to grapple with over the past few years. So I do think that today's language is strong. I do think we are putting ourselves on a very clear path to create a new transformative model of public safety. I don't want to underestimate the ability that this action gives us to create more space within the city governance and also pushing to engage our community more throughout this year-long process of truth and reconciliation. I do, I do believe this language is really, really good and many of us spent countless hours working with each other, And many of us spent countless hours working with each other, with staff, with legal experts, with a lot of, contending with a lot of those questions that communities have raised about accountability and systems change and having a future where the people of Minneapolis can choose how they want to show up for each other when people need help and how we want to protect our community. And so for me, that's ultimately what we're doing here, is we are going straight into the architecture of how safety is provided for our community. And we're going straight into the heart of the foundations of that work. And so I believe that it's one of many steps we will be taking this year and next year as we look to create a new system of community safety that is, you know, that our community, neighbors, and our blocks are each cultivating from the ground up. And so I just want to thank the many colleagues here today that were available for phone calls and late research into the night and putting together the most robust language that we feel will help us get there. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I'm very supportive of this move. I also wanted to offer thanks to our city staff and particularly to the policy aides of the authors who worked so hard on this and certainly to the authors of this language, it was difficult getting here, and also to our colleagues who have looked at it and thought about this. We are putting this forward, I think, as the next logical step to the resolution that we unanimously passed at our last meeting, which laid out a community engagement process and a vision and goals for how we want to transform public safety in the city of Minneapolis. And just as Councilmember Fletcher and others have said, this is an important key step if we're actually going to be able to do that. I've been on the council a long time, and I've seen time and time again how the lack of the council to have any policymaking authority over the police department has made it very, very difficult and challenging to make the kind of changes that people want and also that people expect us to be able to make. I think we've done a good job occasionally. I'm using the bully pulpit, I'm using the budget, using the chief's appointment to try to move things around a little bit. But I don't think we've been able to have the kind of policymaking participation that we should have. I think that the residents of Minneapolis need us to have in order for us to really make a professional public safety department. And this will give us an opportunity to do that. I will certainly be supporting this if it makes it onto the ballot. I think there's questions about what are the next steps and is that going to be possible this year? And I hope that people who really want to have an engagement process and really want to talk about how we can make these improvements will be able to support this as we go forward so that we can then have the foundation so that we can actually make the changes that everybody wants. I think this is a unique time in the history of our city. I think it's very significant whenever we change the charter, but I think this is a needed change if we are to move forward on the pathway to improving safety for all residents in our city. And so I'm excited about being part of this historic moment with you all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments or discussion from council members? I don't see any. Before calling the roll, I will just add a few brief thoughts. And first, I just want to thank each of you. We find ourselves in office at a point in time which is extraordinary in many ways, extraordinary for the pain that our community is feeling after the death of George Floyd, for the pain our community has been feeling for many years, many centuries, because of racism and white supremacy. We're in a pandemic and a health crisis. We're in a budget crisis. And I can't think of a better team of people to work together with our communities to find our way through. And I think a lot of times folks focus on the council or specific council members, but I know each of you, and I know how deeply rooted you are in the wards and the communities that you represent, and that when you show up here, even in this virtual environment, you're bringing your community's voices with you. And I know that to be true of every single member of the city council. And I think, to the Council Vice President's point and the points that many others have made, sustained change takes that deep community investment. It takes thousands of conversations that we have with our constituents and that neighbors have with each other to understand where our community is now and where we're going. And I am excited that this charter change is one step in a direction to create safety for every single resident of our city. It's a structural change that allows us to invest in a holistic approach to safety using evidence-based strategies, using the brilliance and expertise of our staff from all different disciplines with all different kinds of experience. And so I hope that the Charter Commission will recognize the moment that we are in and take our offer of support, however we can provide it, to expedite this process so that voters have a chance to have their voices heard on this important question at this important moment in our city's history. So thank you again to everyone. You all thanked all of the staff and our aides, our community members, and everyone who has helped this particular change come forward. But again, it is part of a much bigger, broader conversation, which will take sustained conversations, sustained commitment to dismantling white supremacy in every system, including this one, over many years to come. So thank you each again for your leadership. With that, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and this ordinance will be referred to the next Charter Commission meeting on July 8th, and the Pogo Committee, which will be Thursday, July 9th. Thank you. Next, we have one item under motions. This is a staff direction by Councilmember Johnson related to economic and rebuilding recovery strategies. I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson for this item.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been bringing forward this staff direction after talking with a number of property owners along areas of our city that were damaged very heavily after the civil unrest and domestic terrorism that occurred. And we were hoping today to bring forward actual actions on a number of these different things, but we needed a little more staff time, and really it made sense to change the direction of the staff direction into bringing forward recommendations. And so I think it's certainly something that I would anticipate is widespread support for among the council and is one of the ways that the city is looking at helping both recover and rebuild from the damage that we saw. And I'll stand for any questions that colleagues might have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, on Councilmember Johnson's motion to move this staff direction, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that is adopted. Next, we have the Order of Announcements. Are there any announcements from council members? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted just to remind my colleagues of where we are at in the budget process. I want to remind you that when we return from our Ward Work Week, which is July 1st through the 8th, we will immediately dive into the proposed 2020 budget revision process, this Part II. It begins with a first budget committee that starts at 10:00. I'm sorry, are you having trouble hearing?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Palmasano. It sounds to me at the chamber that there might be another mic open. If you could just back up a little bit and maybe start again.
Sure. I just wanted to remind my colleagues that when we return from our Ward Work Week, we will immediately dive into the proposed 2020 budget revision process. It begins with a first budget committee meeting that starts at 10:00 a.m. on July 9th. At that time, we will be receiving a proposal to amend the city's 2020 budget from the mayor. There will be time for some initial discussion, but we have already reserved time the following day, July 10th, for the committee to get a more in-depth analysis and explanation of the impact of the mayor's proposed reductions and the enterprise funding revisions from our budget team, led by Director Micah Intermill. The entire process is fairly aggressive, given the city's financial forecast. We expect to complete our work to this 2020 amended budget with a final vote planned for the meeting of the full city council on Friday, July 24th. So I want to express my appreciation to the mayor, to all of my colleagues and to our staff for their hard work to bring us to this point so that we can proactively address projected budgetary shortfalls in a responsive and responsible way that will help us ensure the city continues to provide these critical core services to the community. I really do look forward to those discussions and our shared work as we look to revise our budget and encourage my colleagues to take advantage of the upcoming Ward Work Week to prepare for those conversations when we return on July 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to make sure to announce and recognize and honor that June is LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Ordinarily, we would all be readying ourselves for a parade along Hennepin Avenue, subsequently ending up in Laurin Park. But given the realities of COVID-19, the level of civil unrest, that, you know, the parade in the park is no longer programmed, and the virtual pride celebration has been canceled as well. So, you know, I offer this as a time for us to reflect on the significance of social change, of advocacy, of activism. I think some of that was reflected last week when the United States Supreme Court made a number of major decisions that impact communities of color, including declaring that LGBTQIA+ individuals all throughout the country have a right to work regardless of their gender identity and/or their sexual orientation. That's a significant victory that I have personally been advocating for for the past 30 years of my life. And we still need to push the Congress to pass a full Equality Act that not only guarantees LGBTQIA+ individuals the opportunity to work, but also protects LGBTQIA+ individuals to be able to live in their homes without fear of being evicted for their gender identity or sexual orientation, to be able to receive proper healthcare without concern to their gender identity or sexual orientation, to be able to access public services. And so the point is that we still have a lot of work to go. However, we do need to recognize these momentous decisions as they occur in real time and have the ability to hold joy. At the same time, it's recognizing that we still have much work to go. I also just want to acknowledge that last week, the Supreme Court upheld the rights of undocumented immigrants who have been really contributing to the fabric of America. Those young people known as DACA recipients have been given the rights to remain in this country and to pursue full citizenship. And I think it's worth us as a body noting these significant legal changes that help to result in societal changes as well. And I also want to just point out the intersections of, you know, 51 years ago, when Black and Brown, queer and trans women like Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera and Stormy DeVera and so many others who stood up against police brutality and really ushered in what we know now as the gay rights movement or the movement for LGBTQIA liberation. But that decision from the Supreme Court would not have been made possible without the Civil Rights Marches of the 60s and the subsequent Civil Rights Bill that was passed in 1964. So all of these issues are intersectional. They all work together to move us towards justice. I heard somebody say the other day that we are literally watching and feeling the arc of justice bending right now. And it is a historic moment. You know, I support each and every one of you in stepping into this moment and really, you know, pushing and fighting for systemic change in our culture and society. But that systemic change has to incorporate all of us. We have to hear everyone's voice. We cannot allow one singular voice to dictate how this movement moves forward. We have to be intentional to reaching out to the fullest range of our communities. And so I just want to say happy Pride to everybody, and let's keep bending the arc of justice in the right direction. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements from council members? Seeing none, and as Councilmember Palmasano noted, we do have our Ward Work Week, which is Wednesday through Wednesday, July 1st through the 8th. We will not have committee meetings during that time, but we'll have time to catch up with our constituents and emails and all the things, and hopefully have some time for rest as well before coming back to dive into the budget and all of the other important issues before this body. So with no further business to come before us, and without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all so much.